This time we'll call Tuesday, July twenty sixth, twenty twenty two, meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. Mary Devon, Mike Stenness and myself, county supervisors. Lisa Smith from the Auditers Office without me or today.
Yeah.
And I'm already our administrative assistant. We welcome Kelly Gerlock back. She hasn't been here for a while and Mary Hayward is here from press too. First item on our agenda is Todd Kenny, our Jackson County interim engineer.
Does it bother anyone?
Here it. It doesn't bother me.
Okay.
Morning, sir.
Morning. How are you doing?
Good, okay.
So there's three utility permits. One for Coca-Cola Valley, one for interstate light power, one for the press total. Our duty with my closet. Basically, all three have locations or four in the right direction.
I'm going to motion approve the underground utility permits presented. Second, motion and a second to approve the underground utility permits. All those in favor?
Alright.
Both motion carries.
Okay, next item is two contracts for agreements for easements for the Forty Ninth Street Bridge Project. Basically, two landowners, Mark and Lauren Scott on the north side and Kirk and Churis Dazzler on the south side. Sort by easement for grading around the guardrails. The north side, we need to get more because it's a steeper slope, plumber run out, so of course so. But so I review these with Mike. We have the total area there and then basically how review the like sales of property around there come up and average usually increase that by a percentage of that's what's offered. But that's the enough that's on the agreement that's discussed, so. Questions about that.
How many, half acre?
It's point four to the south, the dazzle, point one four, excuse me, point three seven on the north. And then there's, you know, they're fencing, we pay their seventy five dollars a ride if they're already fencing. Which is back to the new edges right away, so. It's eighty five hundred bucks.
I'd make motion to approve. I would second. Motion is second to approve the easement contracts. All those in favor?
Alright.
Motion carry.
Okay.
Also, guys, everything. I talked to Mike. Week or so ago, by Saint Natus, there was a washout forward stuff.
Is this the one that's back off the edge of the road into the property?
I think so.
And it's got trees all the way around it?
I had looked at it myself. They said they did a bunch of work, a new forward. They changed the correct, filled up the mine instead of clay and washed out again and kind of filled their new over about half full.
This is the same one we talked about last year or the year before?
It could be because it's very been done, but this last big green, we had that Friday night.
So it's the same, west of Saint Natus, just before the sports entrance. Yeah, that's the same one we dealt with before, yeah.
West of Saint Natus, what do you say about the sports?
It's right before the, just before the entrance is east of the sports. You'll have to get a proper.
And it's a crosswalk cover or a driveway cover?
Both. What? I mean, sounds like they put a new one in for the county.
I can't, that was a long time ago though, but I can't remember exactly.
It was washing out or something. It was trying to make a trail around.
Goes under Centerville. And it goes north and south, but I can remember, I don't remember the driveway being that long, maybe it isn't.
Culver, Culver erosion issue.
Yeah. Or else it creates washing, whatever it washed out or pushed in their cover. They had put in, they put a new cover in for their driveway. Yeah, it's just so bad in that pool because of all the stuff that got washed out.
Yeah, maybe they had repaired that the last time we talked about it. I remember going to look at it, so I we had to ask Mike if they repaired that and only with the washout issue. And basically it was on his land, private land.
The washout was on private land. Okay, I'll take it to get the, get back to you guys, but. And then coming back here at eleven thirty, is that correct?
Yep.
So there's a safety meeting of all the employees going on right now, so I'm gonna go in here and trigger on the new safety policy. Talk about that and then kind of give an update about some other things that are going on as far as what the safety committee is doing. Then we have a safety committee meeting second right after lunch. Yes, to show of course, no, I talked to Mike about that really.
Not as many as last week.
Yeah, we, we encourage them to park at the shed, you know, at the shop and then shuttle over. But it's probably better than parking in the parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
And I asked about maybe going out to the interpretive center up there. But there's not a whole lot of room, because there's a meeting room there as well, but.
So there's not a really a room to work at, love work down here.
Not that I saw, I mean, other than setting up chairs like in the shop area.
Yeah.
But that give a place a shed, like a bigger shed. Yeah, they just have a meeting room, but they get into training instead of not that we don't like coming to courthouse, it's kind of it's a little harder.
Yeah, the library parking lot's only a block.
Parking a dump truck. Commercial or parking lot is a little scary.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's what I'll be doing the rest of the day, I'll be back in here at thirty.
Okay.
Thanks.
I did leave a contact number for that.
What you just talked about?
Yeah.
With Stacy.
Yeah, well, Mike, Mike was there too.
Okay.
Is there a son or somebody that called about it?
Okay.
Okay, our next item is visitors, citizens, and we do have a visitor, Josh, old city manager of Coca-Cola. Welcome.
Thank you.
And we haven't seen Brent for a while, but he's here today. Must be about the ATVs.
Just guessed, right?
Yeah, just only guessing. Who knows? Marty isn't here, so this time we'll recess until Marty gets here. Unless we have, I don't think we have any citizens. They are reconvening and Brett Gilbert, Jackson County Sheriff, is going to give us an update.
Morning.
Morning, everyone. So the purpose of me coming here today is just to get on some kind of public venue and give thanks, praise to everybody who helped with our tragic incident on Friday out of Coca-Cola Cave State Park. First, I'd like to say how extremely proud I am of everyone and how they performed and worked together. You know, I'm just gonna go out to the list of people that were there and helped us. We had the ATF out there, the FBI called in to the command center at one point. The Iowa State Patrol provided manpower, their canine, their plane, and I watched the video yesterday of the briefing. If you would have seen, it's just astonishing that they found the suspect through the tree canopy out there at the caves park. Because it's so thick, it's just astonishing that they found him. And that the incident was able to be resolved as quickly as it was. Otherwise, we'd had an extensive manhunt on our hands, even, even if the end result would have been the same, it would have took a long time to find them. The state patrol also provided drones. The DNR was obviously there in force, the Iowa Department of Criminal Investigations, the DCI was instrumental, they actually took a lead on incident command because of it being a state park. And now Department of Human Services responded to. The Coca-Cola PD was great, Burton Simon went into action quickly and rounded up his people, went out there, we had to set up a bigger perimeter once we realized we had a potential, we had a manhunt on our hands for a while, so we needed to broaden our perimeter, so he went into action with his guys. Jackson, Clinton County EMAs both responded, Clinton County brought their drones. The Clinton County Sheriff's Office responded, Bill Greenwald himself was up here. Clinton PD and their command center came up. Jones County responded with their canines. Even Jackson County Conservation Officers and Jackson County Regional Healthcare Ambulances were out there as well. Two of them, they were instrumental with, working with the little boy, Arlo Schmidt. The Iowa Department of, the Iowa DOT, the Highway Department was great helping us with traffic control and setting up barricades. And we even had a federal game warden out there with us assisting as well. I coordinated with the Jackson County Mental Health Department, Ling Oakes. Price intervention, family resources when we were dressed or frantically trying to find someone to help with the one surviving victim, Arlo Schmidt. Coca-Cola, Delve, and Presto PDs all covered the county calls for service so we could prioritize the critical incident we were dealing with. You know, you're, you know, you're amongst dedicated people with early in the morning, retired Coca-Cola chief Brad Fran to walk to the door. And even started helping me with who I can try to contact and and get a hold of, especially for trying to get our surviving victim with the help that he needed. I'd like to say thanks to the nine one one board for finally moving forward on these new radios because they're desperately needed. During the event, we couldn't communicate and coordinate with each other during the manhunt, the planes trying to talk to us, we don't have that channel, so it's good the state patrol was there, we were able to, you know, cross communicate with each other as best we could. They were trying to direct one group towards the body when they found it, but we had several groups out on manhunt missions. It was confusing because of camera talk, same channels, that's a step in the right direction, that's really good for doing that. That confusion can cause a friendly fire situation, we don't need that. Especially like to thank the local businesses that donated food and water to us, Quick Star, Fairway, the Jackson County Regional Hospital all donated water and food. Thanks to local media like KMAQ and Coca-Cola Sample Press, Press attached, being respectful of the victim's family. Also for helping us push out public service announcements as they went on to, it's helpful to communicate with the public and tell them what we needed, that we needed them to stay away and stuff like that. So that's really all I've got. If I've missed anyone, I sincerely apologize, I'm sorry, but I hope I've got everyone listed. If I don't know that we're thankful for whatever you did for us, so. So very appreciative of the community and the law enforcement, it's how they came together and everybody just worked very smoothly.
It was very important to have a concerted effort and I commend you for, for everything you did and coordinating and obviously it was wonderful to have all those units come in. As you said, what a tragic event.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it was, and you know, at one point, I remember I sit inside during the briefing, I said, I'll drive the scene, and I was like, ATF agents, what are they doing here? So, and talking to the agent out of the quad cities that were on a search warrant somewhere, and I know personally, and they heard about it, so they just, they sent their SWAT team up essentially to see what they can do and and we needed all hands on deck, because like I said, fortunately, the manhunt was able to be resolved fairly quickly. But had it not, that we'd still be working on it out there, I mean, it's just, it's, it went well considering the circumstances, so. So, yeah, it's, it's nice when people just respond to you like that. They don't have to ask, they're on their way, so, but you know, that's also why we try to do what we do when they have incidents too, we just figure out that we go, because we know their hands are full, trying to manage what they got at the time, they don't have time to think of calling you, what they need to do, so. So.
And certainly hope that that young man gets the interview. Even, even your department or anybody that responded to that, so.
Yeah, the debriefing was helpful yesterday, I sat next to the DCI agent that really had to grill into the young man to get the details we needed, and I know that was hard on her and she's a local person here and has ties to law enforcement for the period. That was tough on her, but it helped us hearing the details that we hadn't even got to hear yet, because there were, we had questions about the scene, really wondered how this piece fit into the puzzle and stuff, and it helped us to hear what she had to say, but it was, it was rough on her to go through that, get those details, so. So, yeah, so.
Well, it certainly appears from the news media that the uncle of the, of the young boy is really stepping on and says the family will be doing everything they can to support him.
Yeah.
What a tragic, tragedy for him.
Yeah.
Just can't imagine.
Yeah. There's this great family of whatever DCI agents, everybody, grandparents. Aunts and uncles, cousins, they're just, just a great family and thank God they are, because hopefully, you know, they'll, they'll have great support group there, I'm sure they will. We'll do, our community will do everything we can for them too, and there's a GoFundMe page out there, and I've shared that on my Facebook site and stuff, so. So, yeah, and he's a very bright boy, it's, it was, it was just astonishing how he was handling it, I mean, it just is so well, but it was just, it shocked it, you know? It's just that mature for his age, even, so. So that's all I really needed, just to summarize some.
Well, we appreciate you coming over.
Yeah, thanks for the updates.
Good to have you.
So I appreciate it, I'll probably give it the, the local media and try to push something out there too, so. And I've, I've already reached out to all the agencies that they know and stuff, and I'll do some of that, so. Okay, alright, well, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
You're welcome, you're in. Okay, Marty, Marty, who lives at Jackson County Maintenance Supervisor?
Morning.
Morning.
Well, last time I was here, we talked about the, the part of the driveway to the Penrose Annex. I did get a bid for our quote for two mud jacket. And it's on my computer, but the yard wasn't there and I couldn't get it to print. He will print it for me when he gets back in the building. Do you want a number, what it was, or how do you want me to do this?
You only have one number.
Yes, the reason I only have one number is they're in the county doing it, so I'm taking that's probably gonna be our best bet.
What's the cost to take it out, report?
Well, that, I also did that, and it's about half the cost to take it out and report.
Great jacketing.
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
It's half the cost to tear it out?
Yes, and replace it is as to jacket.
And that's a take it out, report.
That would be my thought, but that's not my decision.
What, I mean, what kind?
So our bids are below our procurement policy, correct?
I would think.
Well, I don't know what the bid is, but is it, I mean, I'm sure it is.
I would say it is, yeah.
Because I mean, certainly just those are correct. I mean, we have no obligation to get another bid or jacking it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a considerable number to mud jacket. It really is, even though they're here in town or in the county.
So when you say tear it out, are we, are we cutting, jackhammering and then replacing?
Right.
So.
Uh, ten, uh, approximately ten by twenty, ten foot wide, twenty foot long.
Over to you. Right, and you've got a bid from a local contractor?
Yes.
Yes, that's not something you're about to, correct?
You can, I can if you want, but I.
I think you have enough to do.
Yeah. I think you're one to do it, I think we'll do.
And hence, the local contractor shot great out there, so they know what needs to get moved?
No, what I did is I told him the, this, the dimensions, and he gave me just what it would be.
He hasn't come to look at.
No, no, he has not. But I told him exactly what it was and, and like ten dollars, ten dollars a square foot.
Exactly where our four was in the utility, right?
Pardon me?
About ten bucks per.
Yep.
Yep. You're looking at two hundred square feet out of it.
Right. The mud jacket, and the mud jacket.
You can do that with a calculator.
Yep.
I would say.
I would say, I would say pull ahead, yeah.
Yes, I think, you know.
You do, okay, because we can still drive out around on the other side of the concrete.
Sure.
So, we've been set for seven, eight days, pardon me?
I was asking the board if we have a motion, but that, that big motion, that's like second, motion is second to go ahead and fix the drive. Without doing much.
Right.
We never did do anything to this part either, did we?
I'm, I'm waiting for Mike, I want Mike to take me out there and tell me exactly what he's doing, so I know what he's doing.
He's over there.
I, I know, and I've touched base with him, and he said he will, but he's just hasn't done it yet.
That's not gonna mean Alex will shoot great instead of, instead of plan?
What, Harry, me?
Yeah.
They've done it already.
Oh, they have.
Yeah, he's got, he's got a blueprint and all the, the markings, but I don't quite understand that. So I want him to take me out there, we're gonna lift this up here, we're gonna change this.
Visually look at.
Yeah, so I know exactly what he's doing, alright? Not that it makes difference, but that way I'll sit more comfortable.
Speaking of the parking lot, where our parking is out here, the two by sixes rotted down, almost nothing on the end. I'll fix it.
Okay, that's a good thing.
Straight along. Fight forever.
Okay. Um, other than that, I took all the equipment back, but I did the, the grain field up there, I took the disc back to the secondary roads, the big I beam.
Helpman up there, by the way?
Yeah. You saying? I cannot believe that that grass coming that quick.
Looks good.
Wow, yeah, Jared did. Up at the, imagine a possibility should be happy with that, I'd say. Right, I, he hasn't done it yet, I was up there this morning, there was a cab out, so I got, did get ahold of but I had called him before you texted me that. I called Sean from Secondary Roads, knows him, the Reese, I can't ever think of his first name.
Tony.
Tony, and then Tony called with whoever came. Well, I thought, I thought I had Tony's number in my phone too, I do now, I got it now, okay? At one time, I was trying to erase some, the frequent numbers you call, call, and when you do that, you delete them out of your contacts, so I probably did that. I hung a couple brochure racks up for Harley. Oh la lawn. Yes, I did, it's down in the basement in the one of the little storage rooms downstairs, yes, I did bring that back.
Which storage?
Not, not that one. The one south of it.
Okay.
Now, now please.
You know.
I know you're the overseer of the courthouse, but there are other needs too.
Yeah, but her department worked really, really hard to clean the other room out. I had no, I had no idea there was that much stuff.
And honestly, that's something we need to talk about, there still is a considerable amount of equipment stuff in the hallway downstairs.
I touched base with him on that too.
What, what was the decision?
I
Well, okay, well, we kind of looked it over and there was really nothing of value that we looked in that safe there. And he asked that maybe if secondary road department could use some of it, or one of their, would take some of it to use for park bins or whatever they want to use for, I said, if we get rid of it, we gotta take it to the landfill anyway, so.
When they were having their meeting here, they were gonna look at it to see if they could use any of that stuff, did they, and are they able to?
They said no, and this is what I touched base with it, but there was a couple of the guys that worked for Secondary Roads that are mechanics on their own. And all them shells, the, I don't know what, what they are. Yeah, would take some of them for their own personal use. And I told them I can't do that until I get the okay.
We'll have to consider.
Okay. Okay, um. Yeah, like I said, I was in that building down there, that welcome center, I don't know, I mean, I can you, I never really noticed that art until I got ahold of it, brought it here, that is.
Pretty cool stuff.
It is, I, I was amazed, yeah, yeah, it's down in the basement, I wrapped it all up with moving blankets, brought it back and set it down in there individually on the, on the alright?
Okay. We had a conversation with the court system.
Okay.
We're looking at possible relocating a couple offices.
Okay.
And we'll need to discuss that, and we'll have to discuss, make a final decision on what we're going to do. Because we need more office space. And some of the individuals that are two in a room are needing privacy. So we'll probably have to be doing some revamping of the court system. Didn't give us our first choice, they gave us an option which we will be considering and meeting with the interested parties to see if that's gonna be adequate. The biggest problem I see is the entrance is behind the security kiosk up at the front of the, in the entryway up there. So it's not the most ideal location for an entrance, but we're gonna have to decide what we're gonna do.
So there's one, actually, if we took the one display cabinet on the north wall out there, it'd be pretty good.
You'd be shocked. It'd be much better.
So you're talking the cabinets behind, behind the, the kiosk?
Yes.
You want to remember that behind there, the walls all cut up.
Well.
Okay, okay, yeah, we, we can pass it, but it's, there's gonna be a hole through the floor, I do believe too, also.
We have to decide exactly what we're gonna do first. And with the welcome center, we still, we, we've talked to Tom Divine, he was in last week or the week before about the potential of having a public hearing to sell the building. And so we will have to somehow clean it out.
Yeah.
And I know I talked to Bonnie at the welcome at the historical society, and they don't have room for any of that, or any of that stuff, so we have to decide what we're gonna do, things that are there.
Probably put it up with the pianos.
They're still there, by the way. So I just talked to the lady about piano. They would be wanting to get the one that they have away.
Yeah, they're, they're just not a popular item, they really are.
Well, I believe we have three Delve pianos at the main museum.
If these were.
Do they need any, nobody uses them anyway?
No.
The one at, at County Farm, all the keys are for shape.
Right.
The one I had, absolutely, I was all the aggregate falling off.
So just take the keys and bring them home.
But I don't need.
But you gotta take the whole thing.
Yeah.
Now, I got another one at our house, and I've got another one at the shop, and I don't need.
My sister's got a grand piano in the living room, and nobody plays it, but it, it holds all the pictures of the family on it.
Okay, and then the other thing that we wanted to talk about is the safety program that we're having for all of the employees.
Yep.
The day of that program, wait and come to work at seven in the morning. So they can still be here at four thirty in the afternoon for that, for that safety meeting, because we want all the employees to be available to be in attendance at that.
Can do.
Anything else from anybody?
Alright.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Marty.
Fair week, enjoy it.
Okay, Sarah, do you want to come up for our public hearing, which is starting two minutes late? Open the public hearing on ordinance number three oh three ATVs. Have we had any calls or comments or anything, Luann?
No, I haven't.
I haven't had any.
I have not either.
I've not either. Have you, Sarah?
The only thing was, I think, Delve requested a copy, but I don't know if that was just so they could model their own.
Any comments from the board?
Do the city still have their own jurisdiction over that?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's just for the unincorporated county and the entire state.
For the unpaid. They're automatic.
Okay.
If the cities have complete control still on whether they allow them or not.
So this ordinance. Nears the state. The state's new law, correct?
Yes, I mean, it incorporates the. The state's law. The only discretion you have is whether you're gonna allow them on your paid, the secondary road paid roads. And so what this does is it authorizes that. And then I highlighted a few things that were different from our other ones. Like that to eighteen. And the timeframe. There is no time, there is no um.
Some.
Yeah. There's no restrictions on what time.
Right.
So we're allowed to do that as said, we could, we can let them on our favor.
That's right. Be perfectly clear.
We can regulate that as a county.
If there's no further discussion, I make a motion to close the public care.
Motion the second to close the public court. Hearing on Jackson County ordinance number three oh three. All those in favor.
I.
I motion care.
Are you gonna waive the second, third reading?
Well, we didn't do that. We just closed the public care.
Except.
What is the pleasure of the board of Jackson County ordinance number three oh three?
Um, hearing no other comments from anybody anywhere, I would like a motion to wait for second and third readings.
To approve the, to approve it and then waive the second and third.
I would second.
Motion in a second to approve ordinance number three oh three and waive the second and third reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Bye.
I motion care.
Wonderful. I'll have, shall I get that on the ordinance paper?
That'd be great. Thanks, Sarah. Okay. Thanks, Smith. It's your turn.
Uh, this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the July nineteenth, twenty twenty two board proceedings as written by Honor for Smith and authorized publication of the official newspapers.
Oh, look.
The motion is second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, all those in favor.
Bye.
I motion care.
And there was a vacancy in Fairfield Township. Fairfield Township is the only township that you as supervisors appointed clerk and the three township trustees. There was a vacancy that was created because of the death of Larry Helmy. We contacted the clerk and said, you know, can you look for someone that would like to serve as the township trustee? They made several phone calls. They have found someone, so today I'd like to have a motion to approve Matt Franzen. As the Fairfield Township trustee effective July twenty sixth, twenty twenty two, and so December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve.
Second. The motion is a second to appoint Matt Franzen. As the Fairfield Township trustee, all those in favor.
Bye.
I motion care. Thank him for serving.
Yes, we do.
Sometimes it's a lot harder to get them than that.
I believe they made several. That's all that I have for more today.
Okay, next step is Luann to open our administrative system.
Good morning. My voice pulls out. Calendar for the week. Um, I have on there at ten thirty regional advisory committee meeting for Jack, which would definitely be by Zoom if he goes, but I don't see that that's gonna be done by then, so. So either that or our last item is a ten. Right. Um, also, it's six o'clock tonight, the Jackson County Fair Parade. Participate in that. Wednesday, July twenty seventh at one P M is the Isaac webinar on pipelines. The role of counties in the construction process that is also by Zoom, ready to go to that. I have on the calendar a tentative meeting of the Jackson County Emergency Medical Services. Tonight, I don't know where that is. I haven't received a notice of that.
I have the last detail on that either, maybe.
Maybe they're not tonight.
I don't have it in my calendar either, so.
We probably all wanna go to the fair, so they're not gonna be on.
It is a free gate after all, so. Okay, so we'll check on that. Um, Thursday, July twenty eighth at eleven A M is a community solution to the East Coast Iowa meeting interviewed by Zoom for Jack. I would just say to my fellow board members and to Lisa. That's it. E C I A, if you have specific questions that you wanna be asking about the. The lead paint, paint and stuff, I will take them with with me and meet with Kelly.
I'm sorry, I was thinking. So when's the meeting?
Thursday morning.
Okay.
Thursday morning at eleven, I would leave here probably.
Okay.
Order to ten. Because I think if there are specific questions, we wanna know. You can give me those questions and I will take them and hand deliver them. And tell her she has a couple days to give us answers.
We do have questions.
Yeah, so I know.
I know. One is like A C A should be doing that or Operation New Year used to do that. On our behalf. So what's happened?
Well, I I think in the meantime, we we need to talk with Jane from A C A to see exactly what services they are currently providing in Jackson County. Because we do not know. All we know is they have an office that they provide and start. But I know Renell, I'm sure she could give us a report, but. You know. A C A certainly hasn't let us know for a long time what their presence in Jackson County is doing for Jackson County. Okay, sorry. It's all right. Friday, July twenty ninth at seven A M is my focal leadership team meeting. It's by Zoom for Larry. And at nine A M is a, from nine until twelve thirty is a special meeting, a possible closed session. For all of you that morning. Agenda maybe on your desk for that. Monday, August first, I have a meeting on at four o'clock Jack. That is not the correct date. It's actually about August fourth. So it'll be there next week. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, August second at nine A M. And at three o'clock that afternoon, Larry has a green space redevelopment meeting. All right. Um, business for today is I need um. A public hearing date set for proposed ordinance three oh four. Or Brian Stein, this is resoning request, so I'm recommending August sixteenth at ten A M.
I'm moved. Second. Motion the second to set the public hearing for ordinance number three oh four. For August tenth. Or. Mine's just real.
It says three oh two, but it says mine's three oh four. I didn't get all of them changed, but it's gonna be three oh four. I already took three oh two, so.
Three oh two.
Yeah, so they all say three oh two, but Lisa already took that one, so I had to change it, so.
All those in favor, I I motion care.
And just for clarification, that was the sixteenth, correct? August sixteenth.
Okay.
The ten and twenty, so you need a little bit of time on those. Uh, the other uh business that I had was the. The lead paint grant that you were referring to earlier.
I think we have too many questions to do anything about approving that at this point in time. That will be, I would have, entertain a motion to table action on that till we get further information from I C I A.
Make that motion.
Second, motion and a second to table action on the lead paint grant, all those in favor.
Bye.
I motion care.
That's all I have.
Okay, at this time we welcome Mike Earthen and Bruce Fisher. They would like to come forward and if your guests would like to bring a chair or have a chair.
They can.
Join you also, that'd be fine.
Why you guys know what's right now?
So I don't know.
We're here today, we we talked to an installer, you've got. I think Luann was supposed to print it out.
Oh, we got it.
We're just gonna try to. Encourage you guys to look at that, be the, one of the first counties in the state to have solar power. One of the problems that we have here is because the. M M U is not, uh, it doesn't do any net metering or anything like that. So the proposal that the that you worked up for is trying to take most of the energy, but not overproduce during during time. Like during the summer here, we'd overproduce and you you give it away for for less than two cents a kilowatt. Back to M M U. Bruce is gonna go through the grant.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna start out focusing primarily on the jail, and then if we have time and interest continues, we can talk about the courthouse. Okay. Blue Sky Solar is very reputable, we're a supplier based in Dubuque. Obviously, we put this out with bids to get a lot more than just Blue Sky, but they're they're about the best, in my opinion. And they did both of our solar arrays, um, and they're very committed to our community. And they propose two options. One is a small option, uh, which is a twenty something kilowatts. Uh, uh, and then the larger one is forty four point four. We would advise or suggest that the forty four, forty four kilowatt site is probably the better option for us.
That's all we said.
And that will only cover about thirty percent of the use of the jail's electricity. If we build a bigger system, A, we don't have a big enough roof. There's a lot of stuff on that roof right now, and this is about the max what we can put on that roof as it's current design. Without any kind of real.
What percent did you say?
Thirty. It's actually twenty nine point seven, I think.
So then our payback is what?
Your payback is, uh, well, it's a nine and a half year payback. And it's a ten point something annual return for thirty years. Pretty darn good return. That does include some grants, which I'll talk more about. But, uh, you know, if you were to go forward to, well, let's see. Pages aren't really known by that guess, but if you go to the third page, it gives you your system cost eighty one thousand two hundred fifty two. Um, the numbers that, uh, follow from this, I'll assume a twenty five thousand dollar grant from the Hammond Moonshine Grant. This is a grant that I'll talk more about, but I think we're gonna get it. And we're probably gonna get more than that. So we'll talk more about that. Uh, if you look at the system on the next page, it shows kind of how much we're producing on a month to month basis versus how much we're using. And you can see again, we're not, even in our best month, we're really not even producing half. The the model that that Blue Sky uses is don't produce more than you can use at any point in time. Because when you do that, you're selling it away for nothing. But you paid a big price for that extra capacity. Um, so it doesn't, the the bigger you make your system, the worse the return's gonna be. So this is that sweet spot where the return's good, we're using most of the electricity we're creating at any point in time. Following page. Says that the projection would be your energy bills, the jail are gonna be a little over twenty thousand dollars a year. The following shows that. Annually, we would save about fifty three hundred dollars per year. So your energy bills are gonna go from twenty to about fifteen thousand per year. And the financing summary on the next page starts to really deliver exactly what what we're talking about. Um, the investment rate of return over the thirty year term that they've identified is ten point nine percent. Payback period, nine point four years. Your net payments absent the uh, the incentives, it'd be fifty six thousand two hundred fifty two dollars, that's max. And your electric bill savings over the course of the thirty year period, you're gonna save two hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. We're assuming a cash purchase.
And it's over thirty years.
That's over a thirty year term.
Yes. And what's the projected life of this system?
Thirty years. Well, that's the warranty. Warranty lives for twenty five to thirty years, depending on which panel you get, but they're produced for fifty years. You know, you're gonna have a decrease, but you know, after, I guarantee it's gonna be more than ten point nine percent actually, because everything over thirty years is gonna be upgrade. There will be a lot over thirty years. Most of these systems are produced eighty percent, ninety percent, uh, at thirty years.
So is there any incremental change in cost of electricity factored into this?
This assumes a three percent annual acceleration, inflation rate for electricity. You're exactly right, that's built into it. Which is conservative.
Oh, come on, Bruce.
No, I don't. It depends on what provider you're you're based on.
I can say N F B did not change the rates this year.
There you go.
So I mean, I can see it's not going to. As we look forward to electric vehicles and charging them there. That would be a. Increase.
If if you were absolutely certain of your. Vision for doing that, you might consider a slightly harder system, but probably not much. And and honestly, again, you're you're almost at capacity under the roof. Unless you wanna go for a ground mounted array, which you certainly have to land for. Um, but, uh. You know, I I think. I think this is the right amount for even given a little bit of 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 extra, because you are selling some electricity back to the uh, to the company, to M M U, but uh, trying to.
Two cents.
Two cents.
For gold. And we're charged by here. We're, we're, are we commercial rate here?
I'm guessing you're you're around thirteen, fifteen cents. Don't quote me on this.
Um, so. The grants that we're gonna propose are A, the Hammond Moonshine. And this is a grant that a government cannot apply for. However, a Bible. Free C. Can prove, uh. Apply for the grant on your behalf as a fiscal sponsor. We are willing to do that, in fact, we would, thrilled to do that. Um, it, we will commit to give one hundred percent of the grant funds directly to the county. Um, I've got the application filled out totally, um, but I have to, I haven't submitted it.
You're ready.
I'm ready, uh, but there's a couple things we need to know that, uh, are requested in the grant that I'm uncertain. And if now would be a good time, I could ask those questions. One is. Is there a budget for it? They ask, is this budget? I'm assuming no, but I'm hoping we can come to it, yes.
Uh, obviously, there's something in the. Overall plan for the jail for heating and cooling. So. What what John has budgeted in there, I'm not absolutely positive. We did get. Bits or quotes from, uh. The gentleman that's gonna do the heating and cooling, but I don't know exactly. I don't remember what it was.
Well, that wouldn't be a quote for, that wouldn't be a quote for the solar, though. They wanna know that we have a budget for the solar. And our chances of getting a grant are much higher if we have a budget.
Of course not, we didn't have it budgeted, not to say that we couldn't. Come up with it.
Budgeted for utilities for the building, which would include electricity, whether it's coming from M M U or solar. So, yeah, it's.
I guess that was the.
Oh, we don't have an operational budget, cost budget for electricity. I mean, we have installation of equipment for, but. That's it with the buy or the bid, but.
If i- if we go this direction. Obviously, installer wouldn't be installed till probably toward the end of next year. But then I do need to get a sense for your timeframe, by the way, construction, because they asked when the ground was built specifically, when's the projected finish date? Um, and when would be roughly? I'm presuming it'd be twenty twenty three, probably toward the end of the year. Does that sound about right?
Should be.
Okay. Um, so based on that, if. If we get a commitment to the grant, would you have money budgeted for twenty twenty three for this?
I would say yes.
We could, yeah.
Okay, so I can say there's a commitment to budget for this project pending receipt of the grant.
Right.
Okay. That's what I need to do.
I would say yes. Actually, I mean, did you have some resources? I mean, depending on. Rents and whatnot, or at a ten percent return, looks like it. Looks enticing, rather than. Some other things, maybe.
Absolutely.
What our needs are at that time. Our needs to change in a year, you know.
Yep. Well. I mean, we're gonna need a commitment before we find this rate.
Well, we realized that. So, I mean, where was your number at? I I. What the cost of the price?
Fifty two thousand. It was on.
It's right here.
Fifty two, oh, fifty six thousand two hundred sixty two dollars on the third page. Fifty two, oh fifty six thousand two hundred sixty two dollars on the third page. That's the actual cost.
You take the grant off of that.
Yeah, no, I don't have an issue with that.
Excellent, okay, well, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna take that back. Can I ask somebody in the audience to respond?
Sure.
So we put a solar array system at the conservation. You know, what's your thoughts, David?
I think, uh, longer range. Yeah, um, when you look at projections of, I just heard theirs was nine years, I think ours was seven payout, but. When you look at the lifespan, it makes sense to pay a higher cost upfront, if it's gonna pay out over long term. For the county, you're not gonna have those expenditures in the future, so. I mean, you're you're spending what you're gonna be spending in the future.
Right.
If you have the money in hand, it makes sense now if you're never turning.
Well, just basically a good investment.
Yes.
So you're saying it's working good for your utility out there now?
So far, yes, so, um, I mean, we're so early into it, I don't think we can, but.
What was your last energy bill, Nate?
That's a good question. Board member, do you remember? I signed off on so many trails last.
I was gonna say zero, we're twenty dollars or something like that.
I don't wanna, I got three board members.
Oh, then we should have four answers, right?
Remember exactly.
Okay, I was just curious.
Everybody can guess that one, what the number was.
These summer months, let's just say it's been little to nothing or payback so far. The winter months are up.
That's like your neighbor up there, up the road on that old desk game, has put a solar array on.
Yep. Okay, um. Would you happen to have top of mind that they, the ground was broken?
It's been broke.
What is, what, what do you want for an answer there?
Well, a day if possible, or a month.
Ground's broke.
May.
There is no, no concrete's been poured or anything, but. Well, the building.
And I've been all reading sixteen or eighteen months was the plan for kind of completion. Is that still pretty much right?
I thought it was a little longer than that. It's gonna depend on supply.
Yeah, and I did say that, I remember.
Yeah, materials are the big thing, just when, when, when they met with the contractors, some of them said it would be. August or September, maybe even no October, before they got some of the materials.
Okay.
Waiting for that.
Do you think it'd be fair to estimate fourth quarter twenty twenty three, or you think that's pushing?
That's probably fair. I think that'd be fair.
So when you say twenty twenty three, fourth quarter.
I was thinking twenty twenty four for us. Oh, your fiscal year?
And yes, yeah.
But I'm, I'll, I'll be.
Got it.
I guess one of the things that, you know, um. John Hanson is our building contractor, and um, I don't really know if we've discussed. In detail with him about the solar and putting it on the roof.
Yeah, I think he made a comment, he wasn't so thrilled about putting it on the roof.
Well, you have options, you got plenty of land.
I talked to John.
Oh, you did, okay.
Well, he he sent me the bid plans for for our our guy to develop this plan.
Okay.
So I told him what we were doing, and I just said, and he needs a set of plans to make sure that it would be. He said, sure, I'll send you the bid plans, but he didn't, I didn't, didn't say we're gonna do it.
No, no. I just wanted to make sure that he was aware that we were contemplating um, this process.
Well, it says it doesn't interfere with our heated building system or units that are on the roof, and I think that they probably would, but. He probably needs to contact it.
He's aware again of the effort, um, and and I think the main reason to contact would be to coordinate the installation, but then you have to work. Which really is not gonna be much, because it'd be the last thing you're about to do on the whole site.
But if we kind of do different things like that, put in the roof, then.
Yep. Yep, absolutely. So. This bid or.
System, or the bid for this, is that told until the end of twenty three, fourth quarter of twenty three, you're telling?
Uh, he expects it's gonna come down, because right now solar's going crazy, it's way overpriced, the the supply chain is like solar like everybody else.
His software might generated this, so it makes it look like a bid. But he fully expects that you guys will put out a request for proposals and do the standard.
Well, we'd have to.
Yeah, and he he knows that, but it just fits into his system when he puts the numbers in, then it does that. You know, where it says half is due here.
Um, and is, are the efficiencies gaining or growing on the size of the panel? I'm not sure about that, I I don't think, so, I I think.
The panel technology is really what's changing, it's the battery backup systems, more than anything where they're changing.
So we could.
Maybe have more storage.
Batteries are expensive and they're not a great return on investment right now, believe me, I wish they were. Correct, correct.
Although they're only fifteen thousand dollars, right?
So let's um, let's talk a little bit about the other grants, because there are two other grants that I think we have a good shot. Um, one is the community direct loan and grant program. Um, they are, uh, they don't have a lot of money apparently, but our project is perfect for them. They wanna fund things like emergency response centers, jails, it's listed as their priorities. I'm thinking it's probably a five to ten thousand dollar grant that we're gonna be eligible for. Um, the issue with that is that cannot come from the five oh oh one two C, it has to come from the county. You all have apparently, in talking with them, I've been talking to folks that run it, have received the grant from them prior. For communications equipment, for, I think, uh, like nine one one, I think, yeah.
Recently?
Well, they remembered it.
Well, then, I mean, Lynn would probably know something about that.
But the the reason that I bring that up is that we, you will have a, what's called a unique entity ID that's required. Uh, if you've had a previous grant, we have to use that to log in. Um, I would also need to work with somebody from the county to fill out a lot of that stuff, if you guys didn't wanna do it yourself. Um, which you probably could, we'd be happy to help you, but if you wanted to help, it's something that we would need to do with the county for.
Uh, I don't think that's an issue, we've, we've, we've been going through one present, they were going to one present, that's been. Very intense. Yeah, I think that.
Okay, um, so I, again, these numbers I think are gonna come down, that's gonna come down from another five to ten grand there. And then there's also renewable energy grants through W P P I. Now, I don't know how these grants interact with one another, because W P I does say. Can't get other money from the city or the, you know, from the state or the federal, um, and have it apply with this grant. So.
Well, you can, but it's up to fifty percent of the private.
Anyway, there are restrictions on how these things work, so there may be a question for us to answer at some point, and that is, do we wanna go? With just one of these two potential applications, the jail versus the courthouse, one year. And then if you're interested in the courthouse, do it a second, you know, in the courthouse, maybe a second, two, three, four years later. Where then we have the chance to maximize all the grants for both of these things. Or do we go out one time for a bid, integrate it into a cycle proposal? Which uh, will get you a better bid, probably. But will probably be eligible for less money from the grants. Does all that make sense?
It does.
Does it make sense that we just take baby steps here?
I think it does, just focus on the jail.
You know, that's, when I was going over this stuff last night, my my initial plot was, I think we need to concentrate on the jail.
Good.
And look at the courthouse down the road, because, I mean, because of the dollars.
Yep.
Especially with new construction and going on the roof, but that's one of the considerations that you always have to do is. Putting a brand new solar panel on top of this roof, depending on how old it is or whatever, does it. That won't be aging at the same, same time. I think that's the right way.
I I would say that if we get this roof, um. I have some concerns.
Yeah.
Without doing a lot of work.
Fair, yep. Well, the uh, putting a roof mounted set on the jail will extend the life of that jail roof immeasurably. Because almost the entire roof is gonna be covered between the equipment you have for the HVAC and the uh, the panels. It that's, it's gonna be a great time to do it, um, so I think you're right.
I certainly think that's a viable project. Yeah, I mean, if you guys wanna touch base with John again, I may personally call him and see, give this, see what his thoughts are, if I could feel him out.
I don't know if he's in town yet. I talked to Dean on Sunday, and he said he was going to be here sometime, I think this week, but I don't know. Is it next week?
So, you know, we don't have a bias that says it needs to be on.
Sure.
I I think that it's slightly less expensive typically, not a lot, but a little bit. But you've got plenty of land out there, so if you wanted to do it, if if there are concerns, or if just, you don't wanna mess the roof.
My preference would be the roof.
Yeah, or.
They're great, they're they're pricey, but they're great. I mean, fans themselves don't cost, it's a structure. Okay, um, the W P P I one, again, that's one that we have to work with the county around completing the application. But I think we wanna go for all three of these and uh, see what shakes, and we may get this solar system for twenty grand if people are fingers crossed, who knows?
My payback would be.
Oh, yeah.
Like four years.
Yep, okay, um. We agreed to to hold off on the courthouse discussion, and I think it's all your point.
At least you got a ballpark figure now, that.
So you're, you were talking about the work with the county, with somebody from the county with that grant.
Correct. Do you have somebody that that could be a go to?
Well, I'm just thinking if, if Bob or Lynn had. A hand in this other nine one one grant, that maybe we can touch base with them, and we can talk, touch base with Kelly. And she was very helpful in the last.
That sounds good, if you've got somebody that's got a little experience with the system too, that'd be better. But I'll take as much work, we'll take as much work off of them as as we can.
So. Maybe one of you can touch base with me at some point, I'll get your name and a number here as soon as. We've got a whole Lennar to give you a number, and I can talk to that first, see. I got your number, I think, Mike, but not.
Mike's our official government liaison. Excellent, okay.
Just so I'm clear, you're applying for three grants.
Uh, we are applying for three grants, that's correct, and we're also gonna apply for another program, which Megan will talk.
Well, my question, so I had talked about this in the previous meeting, the new construction program through W P P I. That is the one where a W P P I architect would look at the design and see if there is any energy efficiency plans that could be put into place. And you guys already have the, it's designed, but there might be a few little things that they could. Change to be more energy efficient, I don't know what your lighting system is, for instance, but if they find something that they think. Could help the energy efficiency, W P P I pays for that upgrade. That's what this program is.
For example.
It's called the new construction.
LED light.
Program, thermal stands, LED lights, installation upgrades, all of that stuff, they would pay up to thirty five grand.
And the earlier you would get in on this program, the more they could be able to do, I think. From what it sounds like, you guys would be more in the post-design, where they might at least be able to look at it and see if they could do that little kind of stuff.
Well, design should be finished.
Yeah, exactly.
That's actually all been bid, so that should be finished, it should be just a case of get hold of. Either Rick or John and getting them.
But even like an increase in installation, that's something that could be added.
And and if there are design changes, they will pay for the design change.
I think that it would be worth our.
Sure.
Time and effort to talk to John and have him get the information that they might need to look at, so that they can look at it and. And make some projections or give some ideas as to what we might do to save energy.
And they might also be able to help on the solar.
So is that something that you contact John per se and get the design, is that what you're saying?
It's a two-page application that gets turned into W P P I. And then their architect would contact everyone involved in the design, so on that application, I ask for the. Contact information of your architect, engineer, electrical engineer, and contractor.
That would all come together.
And they would talk to each other.
Well, it's better that they do instead of somebody relay.
Exactly.
My word changes by the time you say it six times.
And it's a thing that maybe, you know, how far you are along, maybe they look at it and say, hands off, we're not doing anything, but at least you tried.
Yeah, absolutely, I can give you John Hanson's own number.
This is gonna be a little more than that for the.
So this is one, that that's a good start, if if you wanna share that with me, go ahead.
Three one nine. Seven five nine. Two three three zero.
What's John's last name?
Right, uh, we'll get that information, we'll fill out the app, or you're gonna decide it, but we'll bring the thing over, we'll sign it, and we'll get it submitted, and we'll see where that goes.
First, we need to approve.
I would make a motion to, what's this say?
Are you, so my question is, is are you making your motion to approve? Jackson County Energy District Committee applying for three grants for a solar project at the Jackson County Law enforcement center.
So we have two different action items here, the way it looks, right?
Discussion pop selection on Jackson County Clean Energy Projects. Discussion possible action on engineering grant for solar project.
That's kind of this last one.
So, okay, the first action item, I would say would be just to move forward.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, I would make that motion.
Favor. And the second motion would be to do the study on the plans and.
Apply for the grants.
So there's, there's one program, that's the energy efficiency, and then there's three grants.
I think the first one you just mentioned was the program.
That's the three grants, this is what I'm, what I, this is what I'm thinking you just did, applying for three grants for the solar project.
That was my assumption.
Okay.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, so now we're gonna talk about the W P P I.
New construction program.
That's true.
I would second that.
Anyway, the motion is second to proceed with the new construction program.
W P P.
W P P I.
And they're your purchase power provider in the company.
What does that mean?
Um, we buy our electricity from them, when we're, yeah, we generate secondarily, and we have them generating recently because W P P I need one. But normally they're, we buy all of our.
Any other questions?
Megan Andrews.
Wisconsin Power and Light.
And that what it's, what's W P?
Might have used to be that, I think it's.
Yeah, I guess I should.
They're actually a co-op business, or not for profit.
Well, I'm with the Energy District, but I'm also on the board of that.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor?
I.
I, motion carried.
Hopefully we save this for more.
Hopefully, thanks, gentlemen.
Hey, at this time, we'll be joined by Nathan Jones, Jackson County. Station Director, hello.
How are you guys? Oh, you're fine, um. I guess that's why, that's why I kind of showed up. I don't know what you guys know what's going on in the county, but. Kind of here for a little bit of an update. Um, we'll start off with just how our summer's going. We started for camping, I don't, I've been in here since before the season even started, so it's kind of sad to say. Um, camping started slow this year, and has picked up quite a bit here lately. Camping started slow this year and has picked up quite a bit here lately. Campgrounds were full for two weeks before fourth. Always have a little lag after fourth or start. So I think um overall camping has done. On par or above par for the last ten years for campgrounds for tendancy. So that's a good sign. Flooding hasn't affected the campgrounds other than a little bit early in the spring. Um, we shut down some sites here and there. Few days of flooding. So tho- those are kind of the uh outliers for you guys. Just if you have any questions on the camping. Currently. We're working on a few different projects. And one, we're working with the county attorney on is a land donation just north of. The Hurstville Turf of Center, I guess it'd be northwest. My directions are correct. We're still working on that. I think I kind of. He hated that to you guys last time. Um, there's some glitches. What? Kind of coming towards us. They wanna do it one year lease for one dollar for the first year just to make sure the county care of the property to the communities they wanna see. Uh, so I'm working with Sarah. Sarah's gotten some of that information in the lease. We're trying to figure out. Try to protect the county if that's the best thing, because there's some wording in there that kind of concerns me. Just twenty acres, it's got a five acre pond, a barn and a cabin on it. So um. I think it'll be a nice outdoor recreational opportunity for the community and county if we can get it done. And it's uh. Just trying to figure out. How we do it best protect citizens and we don't wanna get stuck with some kind of building feature. So that one is something we're kind of, I think we're moving forward. After talking to Sarah the one day, we're gonna keep moving forward with that project. So that's, that's one we're kind of moving on. Another. Let's just hop into some grants where we're gonna apply for grants again for a few of our new accesses, mainly Bridgeport. Last time I applied for them, we scored fourth and I think they paid out three. So I think we have a good opportunity. The way I applied for them last time, I used our reserve fund as match. I think that's what I'll do again. This is to cover our butts in the future. If we do get the grant, we we need to know we have backing for the match. Um, so we'll probably be looking at the Bridgeport access for putting a ramp in there. Um, we're gonna do that in two steps. I don't know if we'll go as far as the original D and R plan, three hundred fifty thousand dollar. Access design, I'm thinking it's gonna be way less, but the main. And I don't permit, I'm, don't quote me on those three hundred, but it was high like that.
I mean, that's a huge area with.
So the main goal first is getting a ramp into the river that people aren't, when they're getting in and out, are not tripping, falling, break ankles kind of thing. And then we'll move forward with steps if we wanna pay or or access parking lot road and. Um, that's another grant. It's always finding a match for these grants. So tha- that'll be the main one we're gonna go for. There has been a little glitch. The water trails plan is done and it's been done for months. But it hasn't been signed off by all parties. So. Waiting on that. That's why we didn't score. We would've got the last grant cycle, but we didn't have our. Then you signed up by a couple of parties, yeah. So we lost a couple of points on the grant. So hopefully, we can get that all signed here in the near future right before we apply for that and we'll be. We'll be going on the access. I think Bridgeport will be our main focus. Um, last time I put in for a rare town. And. We got a lot going on right now. I don't know. I didn't discuss this with the board. Um, I may leave those other two off this, maybe try to get Bridgeport score higher. They look at one grant, three from the yearly. And this, so um, the state has a million dollars available right now for this grant uh program. Hopefully, we can get something done on a couple of these accesses in the near future. Gonna work on, you guys have used, given us four hundred thousand dollars for of the ARPA money, I believe it was, for the wall at Spurce Creek.
For the docks. Harbor wall.
Harbor wall.
Yes, yes.
Our ramp at Spurce Creek is broken and fallen off. Um, and it's very busy ramp, as you guys know. Um, I'm trying to figure out, work with a few people in the state. If we can use that four hundred thousand dollars as some match to try to go for a grant paid or do that grant.
I know, weren't we talking to the city, how they got that one in the city?
Yeah.
Griff was in on that too, wasn't he?
Yep, Griff would probably, and I think we have several really good resources within the county. I actually have their, what they wrote for a grant for the city one. Um, it's just the mashed dollars or that's, that might be a very expensive. Project to get that ramp in there. So we're trying to figure out if we got this money sitting here for a wall right next to it, white. Trying to.
Use it.
An angle at end of. The way the money's coming to us to us through the governments that question the states, trying to figure out what they're legal.
Is that a state grant or a kind of a grant?
Well, it's a tax. It's a money that their money's coming in. There is.
Federal and one state, but it comes from the, you know, when you, when you fill up. And it says you got thirty nine cents worth of tax on this gallon of gas. That's got a tax too, and those both go into funds that are just used for voters. Iowa grant marine fuel. It's money that gets saved to benefit the people that are voting. And the feds have the same things, that their money goes in there for the federal tax on a gallon of gas. Goes into a fund and then then it just reallocated through the grant.
Yeah, through the state grant program. So that's the next step. We'll see if we can get in there, but I think it's an opportunity to at least try to use. See some money that we have sitting there. We're questioning, I wanna make sure we're, before we apply that, we can use that. So there's several people looking into that. On that for us, I I don't wanna be breaking some rules because the way that money's coming. But that is a project that needs to be on our radar in the near future. I know we just keep building the holes up there and with rock and so far we've been lucky, nobody's caught a boat trailer X on it. Yeah. Yeah, Alex estimate was about a million dollars.
Yeah.
So. So, uh.
I think it's a double ramp to it.
That was a double ramp with the sidewalk down to the access side. That's something we would be really nice to know too before we, the wall beds are out and been sent out, but. We need to adjust those, the wall design to fit something. Now's the time. Yeah, so. There's, there's some projects. Within that system. So that. That's one of the big things we're trying to figure out now. Um, so. Uh, another thing that you guys maybe have seen, we did a bunch of dozing out in the marsh. Still getting complaints that the water isn't filled up. There's a reason we don't wanna pump water. Fill the maybe invasive species right back in right away. We're gonna give it some time, see if the rain can fill it. And it's probably best that we can get some vegetation on those mountains and see what happens before we build that system.
I've had a lot of people like have said, it kinda looks like a camel.
Yeah, uh, that's, that's, I guess it was kind of off, we didn't use engineering design for that. We just went from for. And I think it's gonna work out great. We've already stocked two thousand two hundred fifty yellow perch in the north end. If we can get some rain in the fall, we'll see. They don't survive this winter. The Fisheries Bureau has already committed that they'll stop begin next spring, just to make up.
They came really, really close to.
You know, so it's coming, it's filling up. Um, solar is a better probably until we get some veg, so wind up just.
Those mountains.
It has a pretty nice rain.
Yeah.
It might be, uh, one day I looked at after rain, there was water running top into the lower.
Okay.
Maybe some small fish.
Yeah, they could be pushed into the.
Yeah, we don't want the rain sink.
No, 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 so. Um, yeah, that's, that's another project. We've kind of been getting, well, that was always on the panel and so you get placed. We fielded a lot of points about no water in there. Um, we're still doing enough, because we're not gonna. There's no point in spending twelve hundred dollars to kill it off and go start a pump and diesel costs. I wouldn't wanna know what it costs to pump it full right now anyway, so it's just let mother nature help us. Yeah, so. Um, that's, that's something. I think uh the one that maybe is looming in the room and Josh is here, maybe he can help me out. The grant that we met on, was that two months ago, probably, the Destination Iowa Grant. With the state has come back and we've been accepted for a reward or award of seven hundred fifty thousand. For the Prairie Creek project. Um, we signed off on that we would accept. And then we, we get all the paperwork back from them. We can look over it, we'll find it to them to make sure that's what we need to do. And we can do what we want with it. So we haven't signed off for sure that we're gonna do it. Um, that's where we're gonna take in more people ready, look it over really tight um in the future, but. As of now, we told the governor, she released it out in press release. So you guys get calls on that. That is something that's happening. I don't know if Josh wants to build one anymore.
We uh signed notice of award, not a contract. So uh the council, the city will sign off on a resolution for a contract. I imagine it's the same for the county and the conservation board. Some misinformation out there and we're in no position to tell the governor to recreate her memo, but. This is not a McCogan River improvement, it's strictly Prairie Creek inside Prairie Creek Recreation Area. So they had to answer and clarify a few things uh.
Yeah.
Uh, out in the public already and uh this. Silver all is an enormous opportunity for for, I think for Nate and I, it's kind of like finding your house and now what, but we have until June twenty twenty six to. To affect all the improvements and get everything straightened together and. And we look forward to everything that's happening over there. So it'd be a great city asset, a good county asset as well. So I just think the next steps are. Probably putting our minds together on a monthly meeting and starting to think about who's in charge, generals. Project accounting involved, love to make sure that uh if it's the city or if it's the county, they're prepared for single audit. I'm not sure if you guys are or not. We do have about thirty three million dollars capital projects going right now, so we're seeing a pre-practiced and single audit lately. So uh probably volunteer our help, certainly that area if needed. But uh it'll be a a good marriage for us and a good opportunity for us to make some good improvements in the park and. If we briefed everyone that gave us support letters, thanking them and saying, hey, you know, we really appreciate this. The outside community of Jackson County, this was extremely competitive process, very difficult to come by. And I think this is a very, very good highlight. Unfortunately, what happened Friday, it was a total tragedy. But hopefully over time, as the improvements finish throughout Prairie Creek in this area. That tragedy will kind of come to pass in a way because there's a lot of good news out. First thing you can do right now is the tragedy, so. Positive spin just come to the city.
Yeah, I told Larry after I heard it, I said, I hear you've been swinging from the trees. So excited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Steve project, been working on that for years.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out something.
I think we're gonna get a really good thing and working with Josh. I think the best thing that's coming out of this is county is getting another community that's working with us. I, when I started this, I think there was only one or two communities in the county that actually worked with conservation. Other ones are. You know, we're buttonheads all the time and we're still buttonheads. But now we're working together for a single that's gonna benefit everybody. So I think that's the best thing that can come from this. We kind of are joining forces and getting to know how we can better each other. That's something really good out of this. So um, like you said, yeah, we're, you gotta put some positive news to the area right now, so.
Well, I think it's very positive that we have a city manager that comes to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors in the past. We have not had them.
Okay.
Present in the room.
Yeah.
And I think it's important to know what each are trying to do to improve the county.
Yeah.
But we, we really do appreciate.
Yeah, citizens don't know the difference a lot of times and they don't understand, and just like us with the state. They don't know that we're county and we're not D and R. Um, that's just the nature of the beast. So we try to work with each other and try to do the best. Yeah. I don't know if you guys have any questions for me. I'm probably missing things that I'm one of those off.
It's just finding.
So I did show them pictures of that canoe.
And that'll be something I'll add into that grant. It's the canoe uh for Bridgeport and then maybe that's something in the future. I think these grants are. The governor has shown that she's committed the try and to, she understands. And and I guess if we keep the same governor or not, but she understands that water trails and. Newly and kayaking, it's a huge recreational opportunity to stay. Um, and she is keeps funding these at higher and higher rate in the last few years. So I think it's gonna continue seeing that. Um, opportunity for some of these grants out there, so um something.
I think she realizes the public is demanding, you know, they, that's what they want. They want the right outdoor recreation. They want the. The the possibilities and I think it's great.
Yep, so I think there's gonna be, we have a positive light for a lot of things here, so I think. Got a very busy future. Hopefully my board's ready to sign a lot of papers, so. Yeah, I don't know. Do you guys have any other questions? In light of Fridays, like I do know that there's some things I need to do um for our staff. We are gonna have to get together and update our law enforcement. We did have an officer from our staff respond also. We took the media to our building. Um, but they were saying something. Well, I don't know if we actually can do that, by the way, our manuals. So there's things we have to sit down and get done to um cover. Cause I wanna, I don't wanna put an officer's career risk because he goes.
Well, we've had some, I've had some conversations over the weekend, of course. Supplying like your staff, somebody that responds or other personnel that respond with a bullet from the vest or something that's.
Yep, it's logical that if you're responding to an incident like that, that you should have protection, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
And and our, our rangers are fully certified. They do have bulletproof vests. They have the gear, um, other than they don't have the shield to walk upon. But they have mostly gear. It was one of those situations. We had one ranger coming on that night, one on the day that was doing, she was cleaning toilets when the call came. I'm the one getting calls from, oh, my brother's a ward and it was coming across state radio. They were looking for places and he called me. He was on his way for Fayette County. They're trying to figure out things, but he's like, you need to get your rangers on. I don't, one we have on doesn't have any duty gear with her, so but the other one called, he goes, I'm ready to go, just get me a truck here. So we had, we did have, and I think that's a good thing. We know that the Sheriff's Department will help our staff with something. So um it it shows that we can work together as a, between agents, state, county.
It's essential.
Yep, we know, we need it, so. Something will, but there's some things that came from it. We, we need to figure out, discuss, so.
Trading here next Friday too for the whole courthouse.
Yeah, well, that was a discussion for our, ours, we maybe need it for the center to. Together, figure out what, what, when that came in, I'm like, I'm sitting. I may have made an off cut decision that first. But that's how we did it. Yeah.
You have to do what you think is right.
Yeah, so. Anybody else have anything to add? I have several board members here.
I feel like I'm in a board meeting on this.
We gotta keep our mouths shut. We have a quorum.
Yeah, I know.
You know, uh, Mike made a comment about, is anyone from the properties near that north? Highway sixty four access point could talk to us. The state still have none. So is there any? Contact in or or Larry, is there someone with a series of homes along? It's about sixty four, the Prairie Creek, there was a road north south. On the other side, there's a couple homes there that I think would be.
What's that? The trail itself will be in the park.
Yes, of course.
I just see a drive, drawing that showed it on the other side of the road, which I don't know what.
It's not, I guess it's in between Prairie Creek and the road. But uh, it's not on the east side of that road at all, I, I just for the sake of making everyone to focus on one.
The trail being in the park at all, okay, I mean.
And maybe we do a public meeting going forward with those, cause I do know we have one neighbor on the west side of the road that. Has problems with dogs on leash and everything else we dealt with there. They may wanna just discuss possibility more traffic on that area and how we can mitigate. Maybe that's the best thing, maybe I.
I mean, they're not on our road, they're on highway sixty four.
Well. There is one neighbor on the west side of the gravel, but do you live on?
So I guess in volunteer areas that you need any assistance at all to establish or explain what we're aiming for that. Uh, on your relay actions, probably here about the now, if we're getting any questions at all. Be happy to speak to anyone that wants to, to talk to, talk to us about it.
And you, you would be as knowledgeable, put it all together as, as anyone to explain.
Yeah.
That, that would just make complete sense.
Oh, you're, you're talking about the trail coming city out.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, the concept was our shelter up that way. Battery, it's uh, you have to pump it right, sure, to keep down operational cost, but in any case, you have some sort of setting there that has a shelter. Finally, property, I'm wondering what's happening, so if you get that type of phone call, things could be all done to send them that way. And then eventually we can relieve some of those concerns early.
Sounds good.
Okay, alright, I don't need to take anymore of your time, it looks like Lori's already thought.
Yeah, I guess we'll recess the meetings. This time we reconvene the meeting and we're joined by Rory Rowling, who is our Jackson County zoning administrator. Good morning, good morning.
Hey guys, um, the new car you guys have probably seen is in the parking lot. I'm waiting to get to the signage, um, I've already, actually when I was bringing it home from Bellevue, I ran it back to McCoker from Bellevue. Um, I stopped by A and P, he got his final measurements, he'll be sending a mockup of. You know, final mockup of what we all discussed previously for the, for the signage, so um. I believe that's, everything's taken care of, the, the mail will be going out today. For the tags, for the registration license plate, so that'll be going out. Um, I handed out a, just a, a simple spreadsheet here of, of permits that have been issued or applied for. May, May, June, July, so um. May, there was four permits issued, June, there were sixteen, basically a couple were. Were pending, um, either board of adjustment or um, or is um, or commission meetings.
I'm sorry, Laurie, is this building permits, is that what?
Zoning permits. Zoning permits, did I say building? I misspoke if I did.
Zoning and building as well?
We don't have building permits because we don't have inspections in the county.
But it's related to construction, correct, this, these permits are, yeah.
Yeah, making sure they meet the zoning requirements in order to build. So you can see that in May, or excuse me, in June, sixteen were um, applied for. The, the two that are red will be approved here. Very soon, um, cause they both went through the zoning board of adjustment last night and were, were, were approved. And so far today, there's five that have been, five zoning permits issued for the month of May. Um, we are looking at our total numbers, we're in line with where we were last year. For, for total, we're on track for similar numbers as we had in two thousand twenty one. Um, last night. Well, let's just go back, so in June, we had a board of adjustment meeting. July, we had a board of adjustment and a commission meeting. And we have each scheduled also for August, so we have two cases set up for the board of adjustment and one set up for the commission. Um, last night's board of adjustment meeting, there was three cases. One was Brian Stinas on Highway fifty two north of Bellevue, just asking for a setback change, which was granted by the board. Um, Bender, Randy and Martha of Anita Ho, needed a change um, to the uh, setback with the right of way. Which was granted, um, we're just waiting for the D and R. People were to come through to finalize the applied plane permit before that um, zoning permit is issued. And then Dawn and Dennis Jackson up in Dressler were asking for. A one foot setback on a garage addition. To go up, not, not go past the current driveway, but just closer to the neighbor's property and that was um. Can't remember the word, basically they just have to make sure they get an agreement with the neighbor where the actual property line is. With the stakes that are already there in writing to this office and then I can issue that permit, so.
How close to the line is it now?
The current driveway is on the line and their fence, the neighbor's fences on the line, they, they do the way. So they just wanna, the board wants to make sure that they're in agreeance, so. And um. There was a board of adjustment, well, you guys already have that on your agenda for the sixteenth to hear the, excuse me, the commission. Ordinance change for Stinas there on three hundred and sixty second Avenue, so that was um, the July commission meeting. And I know you guys all got a letter from a property owner upgrading, we'll be on the green. If you guys have any questions for me, I'd be willing to answer them the best I can, and if not, that's okay too.
So it sounds like the well that they're supposed to be up to is not very enough. Any timeframe that it might be put in or, I know they talk about drilling their own well if they can't get them to.
Right, and well, here's, here's kind of my understanding, and I'm coming in late in the game here. My understanding is that there are covenants, but no property owners or homeowners association to enforce them.
Right.
So am I on track there?
I would say so, yeah.
Yep, so um, it sounds like whoever's in charge of the well. Their first well allowed more houses than should have been hooked up to it, onto it. And my understanding is that if this other house, the new house of Mr. Smith's. Would have been hooked up to it, it would have changed the status of that well. You guys probably understand this better than I do at this point, changing it to a community or public well community. So I think that is why they were not allowed to, to go into that well. You know, by the person that controls that well.
Yeah, it, it all went back to the original designer, the original builder didn't fulfill his commitments to what was in the.
Right.
Covenants and.
And now we're, we're in the thick of it.
We went to the fencing issue in the same subdivision, three, three or four years back here, and it's still that way, so it's. He basically left it.
Left mess.
Well. I don't think of anything that can't be resolved, but it's, you know, you just have to do it the right way, like.
Well, the options.
I mean, it's hard to shut somebody down, but you're going through the steps of the process.
It's not something I was planning on doing or, and I wasn't actually aware of the bill. Until um, last minute.
Well, we had some turnover here also, so we can't, I mean, it's, that's the way it worked out.
Well.
We, we didn't try to hinder anybody.
Not at all, not at all, and we, um, and as a matter of fact, there was not even a septic permit. Requested, let alone issued before Wednesday, the day that this site was shut down. That was the subject, so that wasn't, you know, that compliance wasn't there where we could, according to our zoning ordinance, even issue. The zoning permit in the um, construction compliance permit. In the string of emails that we've had with Mr. Smith and his contractor, there was asked, how can we resolve this? It's like, let's get a, a well permit from hell. And so you have an applied for an approved well permit. If she can show that there's actual means to make the compliance, we, she can issue that. Um, that was the conversation as of Friday and, or Thursday, Friday, I think it's Friday. And we were hoping to see that and we felt that that site could be reopened. As early as Monday, if we had that, everything was in order with that, but we haven't seen anything.
So do we need to have more conversations or education to the contractors that they know if they're supposed to get permits or the homeowner? I guess it falls on the homeowner, really.
It, and it was one of those that it sounds like there was a lot of hands in here, there was conversation with the homeowner. Between Elizabeth and um. Laura, and there's been conversations with the, with the contractor, which I didn't get involved with either from till last Monday. Um, there was conversations going back to uh. Um, Christina's time back in February. And I think some of it is just the verbiage, just, you know, how we use to describe things, permit application. You know, they think, a lot of people are under the understanding that when they write that check out. They have a permit, they have, they wrote that check up for permit, and when our reality, they're writing that check out to start the application process.
That's right.
And not to get a permit, and I, I just think that. You know, not just in this incident, but county government as a whole, we need to do a better job of educating our public.
Well, there's policy and procedure for a reason, and then we gotta follow policy and procedure, whether it be slow or whatever, maybe, I, I don't know, but I. I guess my thought is it was taken for granted in that situation because it is in a subdivision and there's seven houses around it.
Yeah, and all on the same well.
Yeah.
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 And you know, it's, it's not an ideal situation at all.
No.
And it just puts us in a, in a bad, bad.
I mean, their covenants just weren't followed, that's the bad, bottom line is that the, the, the. That the gentleman that developed this subdivision didn't follow the, the bylaws and the covenants that he put out.
Well, all the, all the owners of the lot should be on that board, I mean, that would be. That's the one of the problems.
So you're basically going to each individual and if he's got an issue, he's gonna get his own attorney. I mean, there's covenants, questions been, come up in that subdivision before, but it's just a case where the developer didn't follow through with.
Where exactly?
Right past the golf course. On the right.
Going north.
If you take the grab, you gotta take the grab road right at the edge, east or the south edge of the golf course and it goes around the corner. Unless you wanna walk down, down to the golf course, which is really nice, you're, the homes are right there on the course.
It's, it's, I mean, this, you know, shouldn't be happening, I'm not convinced it's. An issue that was created by us.
Building permit or.
I think they applied for zoning permit, the application was there. Correct, which is part of what my checklist includes, we have our zoning. Um, requirements that they're, have to meet, so in this situation, there's zone A, A one. So they have to have a minimum of two acres and a minimum of two hundred feet frontage, meet the forty foot setbacks in the front. And the setbacks in the rear and the fifteen on the side, these houses, these lots are big enough, they have no issue meeting those setbacks. So for our standards, basically, they were good. But we still have to have the driveway permit and the eight nine one one lane, which that was taken care of. To, to my knowledge, and uh, but they had not even applied for a well or septic. So that holds up us from approving our zoning permit. And, and from issuing a certificate of construction compliance.
Well, it seems to me that would be not too difficult for them to understand.
The septic was not installed though, correct?
Not as of Wednesday when the site was shut down. And not only not installed, there was not a permit at the time that.
And my guess is a local would be the installer there, so.
Correct.
He absolutely knows that there needs to be a permit, so he wouldn't be doing anything anyway, I would think without it.
Yeah, I would certainly think that that. You know, something for zoning permits.
I think we can certainly resolve it, but it's gotta go through the process, so.
Yeah, and you know, if, I, I, basically what would take care of it is a, um, application for a well.
And they've been told that.
Yes.
Okay.
That, that is their understanding.
They haven't showed up here.
Well, already, you know, checking the mail and application completed, whatever. But, but yeah, that, that subdivision is a mess and I don't know what we can do as a county. Um, I know there's one proposed subdivision right now that Elizabeth and I have a little bit of concern about. But we'd like to make sure that. These type of situations can be mitigated in the future. Either by making sure the, the wells are in place before the, the lots could be sold, I don't know, or. Or before the plat can be finalized, I don't think we can do that, but I don't know if there's anything that we can do. To prevent this from in the future, prevent this from occurring in the future. Cause this is, uh, we don't really wanna be in the middle of it.
Well, I, I get the buyers too, when you take a loan out for a home, there's a date that that needs to be done.
They have, yeah, they're, they're under the gun, they are under the gun, without a doubt, so anyway, um. We got that covered, we talked a little bit about Brian's rezoning, gave you this and all I have, any questions for me?
I'm not, um, this morning when Marty was in, we talked about office space.
Sure, okay.
So um, in the not too distant future, we'll wanna meet with you with Elizabeth to show you what options we might have.
Okay.
Um, we met with the court system and. They didn't like our idea, and so they gave us an alternative and so we will. I guess we'll show you what's available and see what we wanna do.
Okay, and you know, I know there's been talk about clerical assistance for this department. I don't know how Christina did it, I don't know how the previous administrator handled everything, she had more on her plate than I do. And I don't know how it all happened, cause you know, I feel like I'm behind the eight ball all the time. But some of that's just learning her, getting in front of that, um, but. I know you guys had entertained that, I would hope that you consider entertaining that.
No, that's part of the reason that we're looking at office space.
Okay, okay, excellent, so, alright. Appreciate it, thank you guys.
Thank you. Hey, at this time of recess, and do we wanna see if Todd can come over now? This time where we convene the meeting of the board of supervisors. And we have been. Um, we're gonna be going into closed session um, to talk about potential um. Appointments, um, anything else before we adjourn?
One thing. I had a horn, because we have a very special birthday today. Sixty eight years.
I'll take that.
No.
That's all I have.
I am seventy five years old.
Seriously. You're doing well.
With that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor?